Yeah, 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 yeah. We live Daniel and Tita Podcast. We back.
In the house. Good morning, world.
Yes, 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 yes. We back with another episode. We in the building.
Definitely, most.
You know what I mean? Um, Daniel.
I'm Tita.
Aisha.
I'm Dip to the lean.
And we back with another episode. Um, you know, we may have a guest today. We'll see when y'all, when we get that guest, let us know who that guest is. We back with another episode, man. How y'all doing today? How's everybody doing?
Doing good, man. Been a crazy, crazy week, hot week.
Hot week. The heat out here in Arizona is staunch.
Man.
Excessive heat warnings.
I'm losing weight walking down the street. What happened?
Think the news said one day last week it dipped below a hundred degrees and they was all in the news like, yes.
Yeah. That's ridiculous.
It's crazy, but a lot been going on this week.
Monsoon time also is coming.
It having rain.
It ain't raining. We ain't got a bull. We ain't got nothing.
It's like, it's either gonna wait awhile or next year it's just gonna hit us more.
I sure seen a, uh, post that I posted last year and, um, the first rain was like a couple of days ago and I posted like this crazy. Praying for rain, you know, since we haven't had any.
It hasn't even rained this summer.
I don't even, I can't even remember last time it had.
This summer.
Damn, we burning out here. Y'all pour some water over here. Y'all some, y'all wanna donate water to Daniel Tita Podcast, man? We need water out here.
It never rains in Arizona, right?
That's the facts. That's fact.
It's humid too.
It never rains. You don't know about that.
Who, who don't? Who don't? I don't know about that. Tita, Tita don't know about that.
I don't think she do.
Tita, you know about that, Tita?
I don't know.
Aw, come on.
Break it down.
Break it down.
I got about to drink.
Old lyrical trilogy. We, we all know. I mean, some of us know.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, I'm saying, let's talk about some things that's been going on. What, what's been going on in the world, Dip?
Uh, we had, uh, John Robert Lewis, the son of sharecroppers who survived, uh, uh, the brutal beating of police during the landmark, uh, nineteen sixty-five march in Selma, Alabama. Uh, he became a towering figure of the civil rights movement and a longtime US congressman. Uh, he passed away after a six-month battle with cancer. He was eighty years old.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, we also had another, uh, icon pass away also. I think it was, um.
Reverend C.T. Vivian.
Yeah, C.T.
Oh, that's who passed away.
Uh, another, another icon, um.
He was also a civil rights activist.
Definitely, uh.
Close friend with Martin Luther King Jr. Too.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so it's a sad morning as we, uh, we lose a couple of, um, very, um, iconic, um, strong black men that led the, the, the march against civil rights.
Yeah, the, all the movements and everything.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we're, we're losing people from that timeframe, man. It's, uh, about that time the new generations, you know, take, takes its place, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, man.
Yeah, that was, was that like the, the fifties and sixties and all that? Now, now it's kinda like.
Yeah.
People that was born in the eighties and all that stuff, time.
Yeah, it's time for us to take the, the reins.
Yeah, take, take that torch.
To the future, yeah, yeah, most definitely.
That was crazy, man. And, yeah, a lot of people getting sick, passing away from that COVID.
Well, you know, here in Arizona, the home of the, the conspiracy theories, um, we don't listen to anyone, so.
At all.
Yeah, it's get, it's getting bad. It's getting bad out there.
I mean, I mean, people are fighting to not wear masks. We've seen assaults. We've seen, uh, in Utah, uh, the way, uh, one of the people, a person spitting their masks with their gun and said their, um, that, uh, it does nothing for them or their kids. Um, you know, the, the fight about the mask is, is pretty ridiculous, man. I mean.
Very ridiculous.
It's pretty sad. You don't have to agree, but you can always just do what's needed because that's what's needed at this time. You know what I mean? That's how I would look at it, you know?
Yeah, well, definitely. Yeah, we need to, I mean, I don't know what, I know people are saying like the, the mask, I'm just, if it helps, if, right, if it does, just throw it on, like.
Well, people are talking about the percentage it helps, that it doesn't help all the ways. It's just, it's a lot of different, um, people saying a lot of different things. And like I said, with all the conspiracy theories and all the, the different things coming out online and, and people, they, we, you know how we like to just believe whatever's posted, so. We don't, we don't like to do a, read a couple more articles.
Yeah.
To find out exactly what's going on. And still, like, at the top, we, we have a president who isn't really leading, um, and then people are already, um, they don't trust the government and they don't trust hospitals and doctors. And the hospitals and the, and the doctors and everyone, they're kinda confused on which way to go on everything.
Yeah.
So, they don't know exactly what's going on with this disease.
Yeah.
And, um, we expect them to know everything upfront because they're supposed to be the medical professionals. But, uh, unfortunately with this virus, it's a seeing, it's a, what, see what happens situation. They don't know enough to be able to say, hey, this is what's gonna happen and this is what's gonna happen.
Right.
They didn't think people can, can get it again. That they were wrong. You can get it twice.
Yeah.
I agree, but you also gotta think about it like this. Healthcare is something that is never going to be at a standstill. Healthcare changes hour to hour.
Right.
Second by second.
Right.
And this is why when people who do work healthcare jobs, they are told, or they ask, they are asked, how flexible can you be within this position?
Right.
Because you have to understand that with healthcare, it's ever-changing.
Forever.
Ever-changing.
Definitely. It's science.
It is nowhere near. I'm gonna put it to you this way. Ten years ago, Center for Medicaid and Medicaid, Medicare Services, or CMS.
Right.
Did not cover telemedicine. You could not go on video chat and see your doctor.
Right, they wouldn't cover it.
Now Medicare covers tele, telemedicine.
Right. They really don't have a choice.
They cover phone calls where you can be over the phone.
I hate insurance companies.
Right.
It's, it's, it's sad that we, that we expect healthcare professionals to have the answers when it takes a healthcare professional anywhere from two to ten years to be certified.
Right.
Exactly. In their field.
Right.
Yeah.
Two to ten years.
Right. And the best doctors are the oldest, older doctors who've been in the, in the, in the profession for, for years.
Doctors, healthcare professionals, everybody that works healthcare.
Mm-hmm.
They have to have a continuing education credit.
Right.
To know the newest shit that's going on.
Because new things coming out, new viruses come out.
New information comes out every day.
Right.
Facts.
Mm-hmm. And you being a medical, you work in the medical profession and, and know the ins and outs of everything that goes on. So, I, I mean, I listen to you on these things, so, and I see all the struggles that we have with, with medical and, and, um, so.
The, the ladies of, uh, Daniel T podcast, they in the medical field.
Right.
Yeah, they deep with it.
Me and Asia could go for hours and then.
Tita trying to give me CPR the other day. I'm not trying to kill me though, you know?
Cause somebody used the, the batteries for something else.
Oh, whatever, anyway.
I had, I had a vibrator kit.
Oh, I thought you were talking about a vibrator.
Yeah, yeah, don't do it, don't.
She said, he got vibrator out of it.
I said, what? Is she talking about the batteries that'll vibrate?
What y'all talking about? What we talking about?
Sally, the batteries are not the same.
She said batteries are not the.
No, they're not.
We're community, community podcast. What's going on here?
If you want, if you wanna go there, we can.
Y'all, it's so hot. My glasses are falling.
Look, welcome to Daniel T the Podcast, y'all.
Now it's hot.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wait till, wait till we're done with this book.
Right.
Right.
Matter of fact, since you talked about the book, this, 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 this get into, uh, let's talk about our sponsors, man, you know what I'm saying?
We got some nice little sponsors going on. We, you know, we hoping to catch some more out there.
Yeah, if you'd like to be, if you'd like to be our sponsor of Daniel T the Podcast, hit us up in the Daniel T the Podcast, uh, Facebook inbox, email us, Daniel T the Podcast, at gmail dot com or let one of us know, man. But let's get into it, let's talk about our sponsors. W W W dot waywardkid dot com, your sites, all your entertainment news, sports and lifestyle trends. Wayward Kid Foundation, also, uh, uh, also a kids program. They also have an editing program classes for kids and adults, get your editing right, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
We also have Kiwi Juice Bar with all-natural smoothies, sports nutrition, supplements, fresh pressed juices, gourmet coffee and tea for those of you that don't like coffee, protein bars, healthy snacks and nutritional education.
I was, uh, I know that, that, uh, Mr. Crawford, they're close, they're closed right now, right? Still? They're currently closed to the thirty day.
Cause of the gym.
Cause they're actually locating somewhere in the gym.
Their business and our business.
Yeah, but I, uh.
I want some food for the gym.
I'm going back vegan on Monday, so I went to their page and I just started drooling, cause they got some stuff in there, man. They got some good stuff.
That's so dope, man.
They got, they got these wraps. It's like a, uh.
Oh, yes.
Aw, man, I'm, we gonna talk about that. They got these wraps, it's delicious.
Alright, so next we got, uh, I, uh, we shine detailing, I shine, you shine, we shine, we shine dilly-talling, make your car shine like new.
Mm-hmm. I know y'all seen that ad we, uh, your Daniel T the Podcast did. Y'all seen that ad? We got butchers, wings and things. Keep your drooling, man. Come get these wings and things, man. They also got them talking Tuesdays from Monday through Friday, twelve PM to about five PM.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they do, do, uh, deliver, but it's, uh, you know, certain mileage, um, but they also, you do pick up, man. And we also, I know y'all check out that, uh, that food review we, uh, Daniel T the Podcast did for them as well. And we have.
Novels by Z.
Yeah.
The game ain't only for boys.
Isn't it?
Yes, yes.
Experience the game told from the other side.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And I know y'all checked out that, that ad Daniel T the Podcast did for that too.
So disrespectful.
Right. Who's that talk donor, Tita?
Ms. Dr. Muhammad, our talk donor, and her book is coming out very soon.
Definitely. She, she donates monthly to the podcast. Shout out.
Awesome, man.
Like our Facebook page, Daniel T the Podcast, subscribe to the YouTube channel, Daniel and Tita. Listen to Daniel T the Podcast on Spotify.
Or wherever you get your podcasts.
Yep, and follow us on Twitch, Periscope.
Mm-hmm.
We everywhere. Holler at us.
Man. So what, you wanna get into, um, word on the street?
Uh, I don't know, man. You know what I actually wanna do, Dip? You know what I actually wanna do? Before that, go ahead, go ahead ladies, y'all talk about something real, cause I wanna actually bring up something real quick.
Just like, listen.
I'm putting y'all on the spot.
Make, give us some time.
Nah, nah, I'm putting y'all on the spot.
They tell us to be quiet and then it just.
I didn't say be quiet. I never said that.
Oh, man.
Tita's ready, gay?
I mean, you know.
I mean, if y'all ain't ready, I can do what I wanted to do real quick.
We can, uh, we started with, uh, novels, novels by Z.
Yes.
We barely got through two chapters.
Yes.
Tita told me.
It's been a busy week.
Tita.
It's been a busy week.
Tita told me she was three chapters in. That's what I heard, and that's what I saw that was posted.
That's what you need to hear, though.
So you two and a half chapters in?
You, you don't even know how far I am.
Oh, okay. Tell us about the book, yeah.
But you know you ain't gonna read it till she does.
So far.
I wanna read it.
How did you guys feel about the book? Good read?
So far it is a good read. She, she definitely describes each character's persona, each character's, uh, personality.
Alright.
To a degree to where you can, you're like, okay, I know somebody that's like her.
Right.
I got, I got a girl that's like her too.
Right.
Okay.
And then you got the, the girl that's, she just take forever to get dressed.
Yes.
Oh, Tita.
She, she the one. That, that, that's the boss.
I've been trying to find the whole, like, you know, comparison to, like, you know, every book you read, you wanna find what, which, yeah.
Which character you're similar to.
That's dope.
I think more or less, I would probably find myself being relatable to Latrice.
Latrice?
The Latrice character.
Yeah. I can see, see, see that.
Okay.
I can see that.
So these girls are contract hitmen?
Yeah, tell us about these characters.
So.
That's in, uh, what's the book called again? Represent for the book?
The game isn't only for boys.
There you go.
Alright, I think me and Tita gonna give y'all a excerpt.
Okay.
Let's see. Where we wanna start at, Tita?
I know where I wanna start.
Do you? Where you wanna start at? Let me see, girl.
She throwing that sexy, that's what Tita wants, right?
Mm-hmm.
She hit you with the foxy, foxy.
We can start with, with the, the blunt.
Alright, so.
Crawford's in the building.
And who else is supposed to drive? You never wanna drive after we started drinking. And do you really think I'm going to trust my life and car in the hands of Selena? Hell no. Cause that leaves me. Furthermore, I don't know why we always have to have the same talk when we ready to go somewhere. Like, I don't know how to drive. Don't let us, don't I get us where we're going? Back and safe? I know my limits and I am not going to put myself or my life in danger.
And you guys have to understand, Latrice, she's a detective?
Yes.
Yes, she's a detective.
Mm-hmm. She's the detective of the, of the crew.
Of the crew.
And we have a psychiatrist.
Zion is the character, what they, they call Z, which I wanna find myself a little related to her, especially during the sea.
I think she kinda crazy.
I think she is crazy.
Psychiatrist is crazy.
Yeah.
No, so, Selena's kinda like the, I wonder if she's kinda like the third wheel.
So, nah, Selena the hot girl. That's what she.
That's what she is.
Yeah, she's like the, she's like the, I wanna say like the.
She always got somebody with her. Always. She was talking about, she had this one dude she was messing with, then she had another dude drop her off at a girlfriend's house. I'm telling y'all, y'all better copy, y'all a copy.
And he, he met no one and stuff, and they got a little, they got a little intimate.
What? Oh, that's when you told me, said, talking about you wanting more?
I said, I wanna read more.
Hey, it probably take two chapters.
NovelsbyZ.com. Purchase your book, your copy. NovelsbyZ.com. That's novels with a Z at the end, by Z. You know what I mean?
We're not gonna tell you no more. You guys gotta get the book. You gotta get it.
Oh, that's all y'all give us?
Yeah.
Look.
Goodness.
Storytime over.
Oh, man.
We might have to pull a few hats out, a few tricks out the book.
Okay, okay.
That's, that's what we.
So, basically y'all can keep us, y'all can keep us updated weekly on the book.
Yes.
Yeah, keep us updated. That's dope, man.
We will do that.
That's what's up, that's what's up. Let's, let's talk about some, some, uh, some news stories real quick.
Okay.
Couple news things. Um, we have battle rapper Av. Great battle rapper.
Ass.
Av. Av.
Why you use these words today?
Come on, Dip.
Vibrator, vibrator?
Come on, Dip.
Hey, you know, the kids eating groceries and everything nowadays, you never know, man. Okay, my bad.
He got, he got ass out of Avenue.
Oh, my goodness.
Hey, you never know what the rapper's nowadays.
That's a damn dip. But, uh, battle rapper Av.
Damn, Dip.
Has been high, y'all got me messing my words now, man. Y'all got me messing with my words. Um, he has been hospitalized with COVID nineteen and suffering from, uh, kidney, uh, kidney failure and pneumonia, man, so. Pray for Av out there, man, you know what I'm saying? He's, uh, going through it.
Tough times right now.
It really is.
Um, yeah, and also, um, John Witherspoon's son auditioned for the role for Boondocks to be, play granddad.
And they turned him down, right?
He said the whole situation was crazy, but from what I heard, like, he recorded himself doing it.
Uh.
It sounded incredible, man. I wish they would.
He sound like him.
Yeah, it sound just like him.
Wow.
But they didn't, um, so, he said it was a funny situation in the beginning, so, uh.
What are they recasting for the, the show?
Cause it's new, they're having a new show, yep. Um, I forgot his name, but he has, he has, now has the right to, to Boondocks again, so he's.
But, uh, I thought Regina's still gonna be a part of it like she was, or Regina, uh, King.
They're trying to get, they're trying to get some people back.
Mm-hmm.
In there for the original cast, but they having problems, so.
Okay.
We'll see. Um, Empire actor, I forgot his name, how to pronounce his first name.
The one that live out here?
Yeah, what's that? How you pronounce his name? How you pronounce that, Dip? Bright sheer gray, I don't know.
Bright sheer gray.
Yeah.
Bright sheer.
The one, the son that's, that like women. That's all I can tell you, cause the other son don't like women.
Oh, yeah.
And not, not the tall one, that's crazy.
Oh, you talking about on the actual show?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I've never watched one episode.
I think he's the middle son on Empire. Mate, you know what I'm saying? So, he got arrested in Arizona. What?
Represent.
That's who we at, right? He got arrested in Arizona for domestic violence charges.
Hmm.
My man out here looking crazy in that mugshot.
I didn't even know it was him, dog. For real. I was like that.
From his pictures of Empire to his mugshot, it did not look like him at all.
I don't know if you can get it. My men look crazy, y'all.
I was like, I was like, what's this guy?
He did not look the same at all. That's what happened when you out of work, man. You ain't got no jobs no more, man.
Didn't his old lady, uh, what, did she go to like a QuickTrip or a Circle K or something like that and?
Yeah.
To ask for help?
Yeah, to ask for help, yeah.
Running away from.
He was tripping.
Yeah, he was on one, man. I mean, nah, you can't be doing that, man. He's, uh, you can't be hitting, hitting women, you know what I'm saying? Walk away. Don't get yourself caught up.
Please.
Um, but I do wanna bring this up on the podcast, put this on the screen real quick. Uh, we have a, a supporter of the Daniel T the Podcast who's, uh, has a family member that's been missing.
Hmm.
Um, she's fifteen-year-old girl, been missing for weeks, uh, I believe, since, um, June twenty-ninth.
Wow, man.
Uh, she's fifteen years old, uh, I think it was Ange, Anthony Perez? How you pronounce her name? Yeah, I forgot. I don't wanna mess up her name. I wanna make sure everybody knows her name before we can get it correct. Uh, how you pronounce her?
Angelica Perez.
Angelica Perez, okay.
Please.
I just wanna make sure, Angelica Perez.
Yeah, and any information to help out, man.
Um, she's from California.
Okay.
But she was last seen in San Antonio last month.
Wow.
She went to go visit a friend for like a week. And the day that she was supposed to return home, um, she went missing.
Man, that's scary, man.
There is different whereabouts that she could be.
Right.
Uh, Texas is one of them. The other one is in Oregon.
Man.
Um, so please, her family is, uh, if you can, if you had, if you even see, uh, someone that looks like her.
Right.
Or anything, please.
Contact authorities.
Contact authorities. Uh, she's been missing since June twenty-ninth.
Man, that's a long time, bro.
She needs to, fifteen years old. A fifteen-year-old girl.
Hopefully she's found safely.
Little girls, still, you guys.
Yeah, so please, any information, um, please contact the correct authorities.
Please, please.
Most definitely. Um, and I don't wanna, you know, we get too deep in it, but you know, Nick Cannon got fired.
Yeah.
For his, uh, comments he made.
Mm-hmm.
Um, his hop step comments.
Yes.
Not gonna get too deep, but he definitely got fired. Viacom fired him. Um, I think he's still on, uh, The Mask, The Mask, so he's still hosting that, but his, he had a talk show deal that he had, uh, that has now been postponed as well.
Damn.
So he's losing, he lost a couple opportunities for his comments.
You talking about the talk show host, the talk show that was supposed to be on Fox?
Yeah, his talk show was supposed to be on Fox, yep. Yeah, it got postponed, so. We got Cross, no, wait a minute.
What's up, Dog?
We got Cross. Cross is part of this show, y'all. Cross is part, is, is the producer of Daniel T the Podcast.
He's the man.
This is the first time Cross is at there right here.
Y'all tripping. We appreciate you, brother.
How you doing? What you got in the box right there? What's that?
So, yeah, I, um, I brought this. This is from Refreshing Churches, right down the street.
Okay.
And this is huge, man. Like you said, I never, I never get on there at all. They got eighteen thousand food boxes.
Wow.
Whoa. To give to families for free. This is what fam, every Friday and Saturday until they run out.
And where's the church located?
It, it, oh, you know what?
Every Friday and Saturday.
Passing up on Twelfth Street right here?
It's on like Thirty-third, uh, it's on Earl.
Okay. It's right off of, it's, yeah, it's right off of, um, the I-ten and Tom, well, not I-ten, the Seventeen and Thomas. Okay.
On the Thirty-third.
Okay.
Okay.
Y'all hearing it, man?
Man, hold on, let me get the.
Every, every Wednesday, every Friday and.
Every Friday and Saturday morning.
Every Friday and Saturday morning, y'all, come on.
And they giving ve- vegetables, fresh vegetables?
Uh-huh. Fresh vegetables through here, yeah, take it out.
Orange.
Fresh oranges.
Hold on, shut that up.
Fresh oranges.
We got some oranges in the box, okay?
Definitely, man.
Feed your family, man. Y'all need help, there's people providing it.
Let me get their address.
Oh, carrots.
We got carrots.
That's good. Tita, put that in your soup right there.
Oh, I eat those like nothing.
Or you can put it in your pot roast.
Yep.
We got some apples.
Some red apples.
Day keeps the doctor away.
You're damn right.
It is on.
We got some pinto beans.
You can't go wrong with pinto beans.
Wrong with that. Make you some pinto beans and cornbread.
Get some, some rice.
Thirty-three, twenty-seven West Earl Drive.
Tell it again, Cross?
Uh, thirty-three, twenty-seven West Earl Drive in Phoenix, Arizona, eight-five-zero-one-seven, Pastor Sean Buchanan.
There you go, man. Every Friday and Saturday morning.
Every Friday and Saturday morning till they run out.
Man, you got, uh, you just got a meal right here.
Oh, they got everything.
You got onions?
These onions look better than the onions in the grocery store.
Yeah. I mean, basically got a meal right there. If you actually look at it, right? They got the beans, got the onions.
And a bag of potatoes.
This is them, man. This was a few minutes ago.
Okay.
Right before I got here.
Okay.
Yeah. Truckloads. Like they went and rented refrigerated trucks just to be able to store the leftovers.
Yeah.
That's dope, man.
I mean, you, I'm gonna tell y'all, y'all could do so much with potatoes, man. I ain't gonna lie. All that stuff right now, you can do so much with.
Hell, yeah.
And it's free. Anybody that shows up, get it.
That's dope. Yeah, man.
So make sure, man, every Friday or Saturday morning.
Get out.
Get out there, man. It's, don't, 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 uh, be embarrassed by it.
Nah, man.
I grew up going to a food bank.
Me, me, myself, too.
Yeah, so it's been tough, tough, Thompson's get tough, man. Especially these times right now.
Yeah, man.
You know what I'm saying? Hard.
Don't ever be ashamed or afraid to say you need a food.
Yeah, don't let pride get in the way of, of programs, yeah, of programs that are meant to help you. This is huge.
Yeah, man.
And, and if you don't need it, pick it up and give it to your, your neighbor.
Yeah, give it to somebody else.
No, spread the, the box, there's, there's a lot of stuff, you know, what, what you need.
No.
And, and the, we, we don't need, give it to a neighbor or somebody.
Exactly.
On the street, there's a lot of ho- homeless people.
Yeah.
Give them the bag of apples.
Pick it up and give it to the next person.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cause always somebody need.
I was watching that, uh, uh, Killer Mike, uh, program on Netflix. You guys checked it out?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I've seen that joint.
Um, it was pretty, it was pretty interesting, you know what I'm saying here? You know, he's an interesting individual period, you know? But, um, the route that he took on one of the episodes of Trying to Buy Black for, where I think it was forty-eight hours or twenty-four hours.
Three days.
For three days, seventy-two hours.
He had to eat and buy black.
Everything he wanted to purchase, he wanted to per- and he, he, it was pretty much impossible.
He couldn't do it, huh?
It, it was almost impossible to do it.
He sat down at a black owned restaurant.
Mm-hmm.
Got the plate, cause he was hun- he was really hungry.
Yeah.
And his white friend sat across from him and said, before he started to eat, are you sure that came from a black farmer?
No, he, he asked him that.
I got, I understand, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's gotta go.
He had to ask the owners.
Who you get the meat from? And it, and it was, it was white people. So he couldn't eat at the black restaurant. Because he wanted to be fully black owned, that where he would spend his money.
By the end of the third day, he had met a lady that, um, she gardens, she has her own garden with vegetables and she still cooks and does community things.
Right.
So he was able to sit with her and actually have a meal prepared from a black garden.
Yeah.
Black chef.
Yeah.
Right.
Everything was black owned.
Right.
Wow.
Yeah, man, so it's, my point with that was that, um, we gotta, we have to, we gotta change our perspective, man. I mean, we, that was ridiculous, bro.
Yeah.
I saw how much he said, how long black money stays in the neighborhood, and it was six fucking hours.
What?
Yes.
Six hours?
Six hours. We run to give our money to these motherfuckers.
Six hours.
We are, are, everybody arguing and fighting and this and that and all this. I don't care about none of this shit but the economics, man.
Yeah.
That's all that really matters. It's the only thing that's gonna rise people above anything.
Right.
I don't care if people are racist, cause they're gonna be racist. It's, un- unfortunately, it's gonna be evil people in the world.
Can't get rid of it.
It's not gonna go away forever.
Right.
It's gonna be there.
Yeah.
We have to focus on us and our, our ec- economic prosperity. That shit was ridiculous. Six hours.
Six hours.
The money stays in our community. It's gone instantly. Seven days in the, in the, in the Jewish community, uh, in the white community. Their money is staying in their communities, but our money is.
It's rotating.
It's just gone. We see none of it.
Well, how come? I wanna know, is it, are, are we the ones that were not, same thing that I heard, that we're not being in those positions? That we're not going to those positions? We should be farmers.
Right.
Should be farmers, we should be being, uh.
We should be building our things. We should be building our own, making our own.
Is it our fault? When we talk about it, we complain about it.
Definitely do.
But are we gonna be the ones that start it?
That's what I'm saying.
That nobody took that?
All talk, no action.
Yeah, it's, it's our fault.
Six, you said six hours?
Six hours, bro.
Yeah, I think it'd be our fault from this point on, cause there's so many of us that just like, don't know no better, you know what I mean? And we're teaching it now. Um, so I think beyond this point, if we don't get to a point where we start moving more intentionally, then, oh.
Yo, you good, you good, you good.
Um, if we don't get to a point where we start moving more intentionally, then we will definitely be the blame. Cause now, we got at least five people in this room that do know better. You know what I'm saying?
Exactly.
So like, from this point on, it's like, okay, what do we do? We actually gotta go do it. Even if it start with a garden the size of this box.
You guys, that's why I said the other day, when we were talking about spaces of opportunity with the WWE lady who owns the.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a actual farmer's market.
Right.
Right.
And they do it from like seven PM to like nine PM.
Yeah.
So it's not hot outside when they're doing it. But you can actually buy a, a plot for your garden for like five bucks, I think it was.
Wow.
Mm-hmm.
Start your small garden. That's getting us our foot in the door to where we can have more black people that's doing shit like that.
It's gonna have to be bigger than that, man. It's gonna have to be bigger than that.
We can expand it.
I'm just saying.
Become a farm and.
It's gonna take some people working together.
Mm-hmm.
And some people losing their egos. And, and everybody can't be a boss. Someone's gonna have to be the worker. And we're gonna have to work with each other to get this done, man.
Definitely, they got a lot of people, everybody wanna be a boss. You gotta learn, man, you could, it's okay to be a worker sometimes, man.
To be a boss, you have to be a worker.
If you're on the same, if you're on the same, you know, mission, it's work together. It's not even about a boss, see what I'm saying? All that.
You guys like grow- growing up in the fields and stuff, like, you know, it was so, I, we never had to pay for, for produce.
Man.
You know, and, and, and it's like, oh, well, you know, you're just one and, you know, your friend got it. It's like, no, we had to pick it up. Like, it wasn't just like, it was free, you know? It wasn't like, but we had to go pick it. I was there for thirty minutes. I got like, maybe like a box at, at all. My, my uncle, my cousins and stuff, they had, they had, they had a truckload. They filled up two trucks in an hour.
So you're slow is what you say.
I'm super slow. I was dying, okay? And I said, okay, maybe cause I'm out of shape and I'm a little heavy. My cousin's skinny as hell. She's into track and field and everything. She was dying. She, she didn't even fill up the box.
Yeah, it's not an easy job.
You know, it feels, it does feel, feel good though, you guys. So I'm, I'm not gonna lie.
Yeah.
E- even though those, those, those six, um, six bags of, of broccoli I got, it was still like, I picked this up.
Yeah.
You know? I helped, you know, you know, you know, put, put the, uh, seeds in and stuff.
It felt good, right?
It felt really good, you know? I just can't imagine people like, you know, uh, you know, Hispanic community, people do, do this every day.
Yeah.
They pick up, they, you know, no, no be- be- benefits. It's just, it's a job and, and you get paid what half of, of, of the average, um, pay.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember, uh, you and your mom were stealing corn, right?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes, we were. And I have no shame on that.
We used to go out into the, uh, soybean fields. See what I mean?
Yes, yeah.
Me and Aisha are from country.
That's the country, yeah. I wish I had that stuff, like, right access, you know what I'm saying? That'd be dope.
We, we came to the city.
Yeah, nothing, it's, it's that natural stuff, you know what I'm saying?
Right, yeah.
We actually, when I was a kid, we actually used to go pick pork salad. And it's a type of, it's not, it's, it's almost like a turnip or collard or mustard.
It's, it's a type of green.
However.
But it's not.
It's grown naturally, out the ground. Like, you don't have to plant any seeds.
No pesticides, no.
It just naturally grows there. So if you looking at it and you getting it, you can, we would go out there and pick it, chop it down, and fry it.
Hmm.
And have it as a green vegetable on our plate. And it tastes so much better when you're getting fresh fruits and fresh vegetables and produce.
Exactly.
Than when you're buying from the store.
Me and Aisha grew up with like so much stuff that, you know, that we should pick from like, you know, the corners of the canals and, you know, some, some areas that we, you know, we're, we're, we're used to it. Some people will eat, will see that and they'll be, oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's, that's my point, man, is that, um.
We just gotta put ourselves in these positions.
Yeah, man.
Um.
Another one he did real quick is, uh, he, he had a class where he was talking about trades. And, um, he, he had a class full of people of different races and different backgrounds. Got three brothers. We asked the brothers, what, what do you, what do you wanna be? What do you wanna do?
Mm-hmm.
Every brother said amusing. Every single one.
Right.
And he said, well, I think we solve the problem of black America.
What is, man, what is, everybody can't be a rapper, bro? Somebody gotta build something, man. Like dude, that's all we, that's all we pointing to be is to be rappers?
Okay, we, it's all, we say that though, but it's.
Man, that's our, that's our fault, man.
That, I can't, I can't, I can't say that's our fault. I can't say that's our fault.
We can't build cabinets, bro?
No, I'm talking about, it's not our fault that, that these black youth wanna be rappers, man.
It's not. It's not their fault.
I don't know, bro. It's called direction, man.
It is, but who's giving it to them?
Right. Parents. Why aren't parents given direction?
You gotta think, in our communities, in our communities, it's not even, it's not generally preached to have, you know, that nuclear family in the household. So even though it hasn't been happening, we know all the answers that we need to do to, to strengthen our community, but time doesn't stand still. So while we're planning and while we're kinda gaining all this knowledge, time is still going on and these kids are getting older and older and older and older. And then you have their only picture of success, being behind a ball or being behind a mic. And then what they're taught, and, and I know this as a black intellectual, what they're taught is to reject what's actually really good for them. Cause think of how many people are mistreated that have gone on to get like advanced degrees. Like for some reason, you're automatically put into a category of you can only be so black now. You can only be so real now. And that's, uh, that's a systemic issue that comes into our community sometimes.
No, I'm not, I'm not discounting the systemic issues at all. That's not, that's not a problem. That's not what I'm saying.
And I'm not talking about systemic racism. I'm talking about community systemic black issues, you know what I mean?
Mental state.
Yeah.
But, alright. After slavery.
Mm-hmm.
The toughest times.
Yeah.
The most racist times. The most systemic racism that we've ever seen.
No, it hasn't been happening.
The strongest, the, the worst times, period, for racism, was right after slavery. They in, they part, they, but what was that for black people at that time? That was our most prosperous. I was, uh, we grew the most. We had the most politicians at that time. We had the most ownership of all of our properties and all those things. I know that they were burned down. I know that the people came through and they tore up a lot of things to make sure that we, we couldn't get those things. But giving up, man. I, I ju- I don't, I will never understand why we can't just keep trying and trying and trying. If it only need, we only need us.
Yeah. You know what I think it is? I think a, some of it could be, we haven't, you, uh, none of us in this room are old enough to literally see our leaders get executed.
Hmm.
Our parents are like.
No, I know the mon- that shit.
They didn't want that shit for us. They're just like, man, wait a minute. Every time, every time we get there, they literally come.
No, it's just every, every first, every step forward is, is two steps back.
And so I think what happened was, there was a generation that maybe fell around our parents' time that went like, man, I want my kids to live. Like, I'm gonna tell them to get off this shit, cause these people are, they gonna keep being racist, they gonna treat them, try to kill them. So I'm not even gonna put them through that. We tried. I'm not even gonna preach it to them. And I think we have like a, it only takes one generation. They had a whole generation of parents that didn't want us to suffer that. They saw all their leaders get executed.
But that's not really what I'm talking about, though. I'm talking about, why didn't we keep black owned and keep buying black? Why did we fall into this economic hole of giving all our money to them? We, there's no excuse for, really, cause we can buy it out of a, uh, out of your house.
Hmm.
We knew people who had penny stores and penny candy stores out of their home. And they used to do whatever they could. They used to sell chicken plates out of their crib.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? We had people who were still trying and try to build those things. You see less and less and less and less of that today.
Oh, see, though, but don't you think like things affected that? Though that, like.
Absolute.
Do you think what now?
Like, didn't you think things affected that, like, um, like the Black Wall Street thing and?
Definitely. That destroyed the whole economy.
Eighties. It messed up, ninety's.
Definitely.
It ma- it put us on setback.
But when you can't say.
Now, but now it's time, now it's time to rebound.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I'm saying? Like right now.
Right.
It's perfect time to rebound, but we gotta, we have to remember that things set us back a lot.
I can speak to that directly. And I remember, and I mean, I love my city, I love where I'm from, but I'm gonna keep it all the way real, especially in these times. I watched the candy lady on my block get manhandled and arrested out of her house for running an illegal business out of her house and had a gun put to my face at nine years old, telling me to shut my black monkey ass up. Cause we said, y'all leave her alone. And they literally raided her house and took her out of there. And they beat the shit out of her grandson that tried to keep them from, and this was back in the eighties.
I'm gonna ask one question, though. From the eighties to the nineties.
Mm-hmm.
Has there been any black prosperous businesses that has been able to come prosperous?
Oh, that was a good time, no?
There, yes, there have been.
There have?
Mm-hmm. There've been a few.
There's many. That's be.
What, what business?
From TV to, there's, there has been strides in the eighties and nineties that we took that we weren't taking in the sixties and seventies. The eighties and nineties were able to, we were able to start getting more programming. We own more, we have Oprah. We have more things of, we have black billionaires.
We did, but then.
We have black billionaires now.
Hmm.
We did not have black billionaires a couple decades ago.
But we, we was.
So there are successful black people.
Yeah, but a lot of, you know what? I see what you're saying. A lot of like black businesses and stuff. We start, we made a lot of it in the eighties and the nineties, right?
Man, we had clothes.
You know what we did, though?
We sold it all to them.
Sold it.
And we gave it, that's what I be saying, bro. That's what I'm saying. Why do we give up our shit? It's ours.
That's why.
We sell it, we sell cross colors. We got this, we got all this shit that we owned.
Yeah.
What do we do?
Absolutely.
To them and then start wearing Louis Vuitton and Gucci. That's all we wear now.
But why did we give it to them?
I don't know, we had a choice.
People are supporting it no more.
Yeah. Why the, it's whose fault is that? Whose fault is that, bro?
Us.
Us. That's what I'm trying to get to. That's what I'm trying to get to. We have had things that we have built. And we sit there and watch it fall down and start buying some white man product. And then be like, duh, the white man, the white man. Why don't we ever buy the shit that we been putting out? Why did we stop by? Why did we stop supporting all black in the nineties? Everything was so black in the night.
It was.
Axe hats, cross colored this.
Fubu.
Fubu.
Rockwear.
Everything black, man. We had white people wearing our shit. They were wearing Rockwear, they was wearing this shit. But then we stopped wearing it.
So then.
It's become, it comes to a time where either we, 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 um, we stop getting the support, or they don't know what the next level is.
And instead of trying to reach that next level. Lose focus over years. We lose focus. We know racism is there, but we lose economic focus.
See, I think it's a little bit.
It has nothing to do with the white man. White man can't stop us from doing shit.
It, yeah.
If your, if your business worth two million, and they're offering you two hundred eighty million for your business.
To sell out.
They'll sell out.
And take your shit out of the black community, if you gonna do it.
That's what they be, that's what they do.
Well, that's the things that I'm talking about, man. I think the biggest issue why you see it just perpetuated over and over again, is because of a lack of patience more than anything else. It's not a lack of support, it's just patient. We're not patient with each other. And I'm just keeping it real. We're not even patient with each other, um, I don't, I don't know on the, the independent interactions. We're not even patient with each other in our own families.
Right.
And I didn't realize this, I'm, I'm forty-one, I didn't realize this until I got in my late, late, late thirties. We have to be way more patient with people who just don't know. That's why I stopped even blowing up at people like, man, you gotta be, like, no, you know what? You probably just don't know. So did you notice?
Right.
And then if we get to a point where I'm educating you and you actually get the understanding, then make that choice, then my bravado is gonna change a little bit. Cause like, we've had this conversation and I know you understand it, so why you still doing it?
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
And that, that goes everywhere in the, in the community the same way.
Really?
We're, we're, we're raised to, you know, not be, not be, not be good with other people, not be talking to other people.
Right.
Everybody was raised to, you know, key, you know, deal with your family first and then go everybody else.
Right.
So it's sad because it's already programmed in us and stuff.
And that's what I'm, also think.
Yeah.
Programming.
Programming.
Programming, that, that the, that the white man makes a better product.
Yep.
Than the black man.
And that's where the patience comes in, because when you meet those types of people, it's gonna ma- it's gonna trigger you when they tell you some shit like that. When you like, man, stop wearing that. Why don't you go buy the shirt from, why don't you go buy one of, of Rodney shirts from, you know what I'm saying? Man, ain't wearing that shit. Hey, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
And then we have to step back and be like.
Wording and everything.
It's also a point of.
Right. Just different wording.
We gotta stop telling black people, your product need to be cheaper than the white man.
Shaking the table. But definitely.
True.
I used to got a little strong for shaking stuff.
We don't, we always looking at it like, we need a discount.
Exactly.
You black, you should give me a discount.
Right.
I shouldn't have to pay that price.
Dog, I've even seen, uh, black people online say.
People still doing that.
I'm not going to black owned companies anymore because this one certain company.
Right.
Did me wrong.
It's the programming.
I'm like, dog, when you go to Walmart, you blame Walmart.
Right.
Why would you go to a black owned company? You blame the whole race?
Yeah, you can't.
We doing it. Like, what the, what is going on? This is stopping us from being able to be prosperous as a black people.
Yeah, we're stopping us.
Right, like at this, that's what I was saying earlier, at this point moving forward, now it's a choice. If we don't do it now, if we walk up in here rocking Gucci, that's not Dapper Dan, right? If we rocking all kinda other stuff and it's other people out there, that's on us now.
Yeah, I remember, uh, I remember from our earlier, last year when we first started pocket. Remember when we named all these black brand names and all this stuff, they're, they're out there.
They're out there.
You just gotta support them. I'm saying, stop supporting for us to uprise.
You have to be intentional, you have to be intentional and communicate that intention. Not with malice, but if somebody asks, just say, hey, no, I'm not wearing that, I'm wearing this and this is exactly why I'm wearing it. Even when people look at me like I'm crazy, when I tell them, and they laugh, I say, I don't spend one red cent. I try not to visit, but I don't spend one cent in the state of Mississippi, I refuse to. I don't care what I'm there for. If I have to pay for it out of my own pocket, I literally went a day and a half without food. And just like, I will not spend one dime in this state, because I know this, and you have to be intentional. I don't spend time for the sake of not causing a stir, there's certain cities in the valley. I do not spend my time in and I will never lend a dime of revenue to. Because even if it's my one fucking one cent. I know it matters to me, and I know that one cent can come back and, if a million of me or a thousand of me do this, that one cent gonna start talking.
We, we watching Killer Mike, uh, in the neighborhood that he went to when he went to the barber shop. The guy that was doing his hair told him, in that particular neighborhood, there used to be almost seventy. Black owned businesses in that neighborhood, down that street. One left. His barber shop.
Another, another thing too, we're always, we're always competing with each other. Instead of working with each other.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta build, you know?
We all can't come to collusion on disagreements.
To disagree.
It comes to that, man.
We have to understand that, everybody look at things differently. You know what I mean? I, I, I'll say this, I'm an atheist, so I will look at things a hundred percent differently than what. Some other people might look at things and you probably look at me like I'm crazy, because I have a different mind state and a different thinking of all, on all these things. That don't mean we can't work together to try to get us to prosper, bro. You start calling me coon and all this and all that, because I don't agree exactly the way that we should move forward than you should. That's why we can't, we can't get anywhere. Who cares, man? Let's get to the same place.
I try my best to, you know, we the opposite when it comes to that, but I'm, I'm, I try my best to have an open mind. You know what I'm saying, to everything. To everything, even though I, like, I, we believe in a higher power and God, but I wanna keep an open mind, I wanna understand you. You know what I'm saying, I wanna understand your opinion. So I don't wanna be, oh, no, you're wrong. I hate that, man, I don't, that's not true, that's how you build relationships, man, understanding each other. It's a, it's a big thing, man. It's deep.
Yeah, you gotta get to a point even as individuals, just understanding that. There's, there's a really, you gotta start to draw that really thick line between facts and truth. People don't realize that truth is relative, your truth is not gonna be mine, but the facts are the facts. Facts are, are unchanged, right, they have, there are variables that affect the outcome of different facts, but. Your truth is not gonna be the same as mine, and we have to understand as black people especially, and I'm not being sexist here, but especially as black men. We have to really start to appreciate each other and not looking for that window for me to say, Dip, you disrespecting me. Daniel, you disrespecting me, no, 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 it's all love. And really intentionally allowing ourselves to learn more about the things about our brothers that we don't understand. Like Daniel, you were talking, like, the fact that most of us in here are believers and, and dips and atheists, go learn as much as you can about an atheistic worldview. Found out, okay, well, an atheistic worldview looks like this, and like, oh, okay, so that's why Dip feels like this about that. And we don't do that, like you said, it's, we've been taught that ours, especially black men, that our strength is our bravado. And not in, and not in the things that make us humble. We've been told that's weakness across the board, I can't apologize to my brother, cause that's weak. I can't cry with you.
No, that's real. I tell, now, I've lost so many homies, I've lost so much. I tell everybody I love them.
Yep, same.
And, and some of my homies, they be kinda thrown off by it.
We have to check.
I've lost too many.
We have to check our aggressiveness, man. It's, you know, like, uh, the earliest we got, I thought I was too aggressive on a certain topic, so I was like, I gotta fall back. You know what I'm saying, I'm too, I'm going too far. So we gotta, we gotta check our aggressiveness and just.
And that's something we don't know. And I, I, I talk about this.
From the parents in the home too that aren't teaching the kids and especially black men. And still be a man.
Back from, from battles and fights and be able to take a step back and talk things out. Like men. We don't always have to use violence to save, solve everything. Beating someone ass is not always the fucking answer to everything.
Really isn't.
It's not.
You resort to that when you're literally trying to save those people, not those things, not even items, those people. I expect you to become that dip if Aisha's life is in danger, period. You have to be that dip in that moment. But if somebody's just talking, if somebody says something you just didn't like, we don't have to touch each other. People don't realize that, it's like, that's disrespectful, even when you talk about relationships. So, we're so quick to get triggered to wanna physically harm somebody, I'm like, look, man, I don't subscribe to that. Nothing gives me the right to put your hand, to put my hands on you for any reason, unless I'm trying to save another life.
That's true. Yeah, and the argument shouldn't get to that level.
No, not ever. We, as, we need to exhibit more self-control, that's why I don't be online calling people motherfuckers and cussing people out. I want to, but I need to.
Type the shit out, you'll be like, this motherfucker, here, look at what this dumbass motherfucker right here just said, and you'll go in there and type, well, um, I'm sorry you think that way.
Sorry you think that way, or, when you really get to that level, you just ignore them. Just like, okay.
Alright, that's my favorite.
Yeah, okay. Because what happens is when we start to unpack that stuff, we lose sight of the mission. We on a whole other subject then.
It's, well, it's, it's in us, you know, it's in us though.
It is.
You know, like, I, I was, it's, I'm not even my mom black, I was raised by a strong. And she aggressive. She gonna get her point across.
That's just our moms. I'm annoyed, it was, it was always my mom, my, my dad and me, but you know, when my, 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 my dad wasn't home or he was at work and stuff, you know? He worked three jobs and stuff when, when he, he was younger and stuff, before the, the post office and even after. My mom had a, you know, step up, you know, and be like, okay, this is, you know, we're not, you're not, you know, it's not, it's not, it's not a si- single mom home. But you know, I have to put up the pans and add the belt on there, you know? And be like, and then the guy said, well, your mom's wrong, she's like, but, but she has a point.
But they always say.
It doesn't matter if you're right or wrong.
We take that, that, we take that, that term, don't let nobody walk over you.
So serious.
Take it so seriously and, uh, we need to do it in a smarter way.
You know what, what, that, my, um, my kinda narrative for the week, that's not something I do, but this hit me like last Monday. Really finding, like, really starting to question why so many of us feel so led to live, to, to live by a standard. When we have no clue what the origin of that standard was. Like, we are thriving, killing ourselves every day to live by somebody else's standard, and I think. Especially mature, mature people, take that time to step back and like, okay, what's my standard? Like, cause they say I need to be this person, I need to be like this, and that's how we don't, we're not able to sit down and have these conversations. Because we have so many triggers that just shut us off from any kinda logical thinking the moment we see it.
Slavery hurt us a lot in this country. The disconnection, the disconnection of not knowing our history. And, and us in America trying to figure that out, and trying to figure out what our direction is, is a big deal, man. And, and we spend a, a lot of time trying to figure out what are we, where are we from? What did we do, what people, and that's why it's such a big deal here in America that we have these. Talks that we would, that Nick Cannon brought up and, and other people bring up, because we are trying to find that identity, man. We don't know.
We don't know who we are.
So people, they wanna, they wanna attach to things, they wanna be a part of things, and I understand that, man, because we're lost.
It is a, a wide America at the end. You know, it's hard to, you know, all the roots, you know, Hispanic, black, you know, all these other, you know, roots and stuff. Like, oh, you know, if you don't speak, um, if you don't speak African, you know, you're not black. There's French before that, you know, it's like, there's all these roots and, exactly. Everybody thinks, oh, if you're from Europe and stuff, but it's like, but the thing is that we need to make America, America, which is, but you know. Which is a true melting pot. Built by everyone. And you know what, and it, and the, the thing is slavery, um, all this other stuff, you know, it has, it, it makes America. If it, you know, but, but people are so, like you say, your standards and stuff, it goes to all the presidents and all that.
We have, uh.
I cannot. Ride too hard for either side. Because guess what, there's right and wrong on both. On both sides, yeah, exactly. Every side, every race, every religion, every nationality. Has right and wrong, good and bad. It's about what you choose to see in those people. And exactly, like she says, that I have friends and family that are half white, half Mexican. I have friends that are half white, you know, have, you know, black.
We're all mixed up, man.
We're all mixed up.
It's not a straight line of white and black.
And, and, and not even that, you have best friends who are, are a hundred percent white, you know? And it's hard to be on either side, you know, but, wrong is wrong, right is right.
We have to be on the side of love, unfortunately, because we are the people that's, that's, that's went through this and we have to show love. Unfortunately, when we show hate, it's just contradictory to what we're trying to speak.
When you give hate to hate. You just double the, the hate.
It's all about love, man, I know that there's some evil people, but we have to look past those and we have to be about love.
Like Daniel did, we're saying, it's like our parents, you know, they're, like, it's like we say, programming, it goes back to that. And you know, they're so used to standing up for their, themselves, it's hard to, for a lot of people to let go, you know?
And you gotta, like, just for me in general, I feel, I'm very passionate, man. When it comes to racism. Because you gotta see, I was, my mom went through that stuff in the fifties and the sixties. So naturally, it's already in me, me like that, and then I was raised in the nation. I was raised with the five percent. So, uh, it, it, it's in me to be that way, man, when it comes to those certain topics. Because I get the history, the history, all, all my childhood. Learn about this, learn about this, learn about this, none of this. As me as adult, I don't, I'm not as strong as I was. Kinda find my own way.
It's ingrained.
So he gonna see me going off. And going crazy, but then there's, Daniel, fall back, alright.
Our feelings, showing our, our passion, like, his mom is so passionate, and I love it, you know?
That's where he gets it from.
Yeah, and that's where he gets it from, it has nothing to do with, you know, with, you know, with, um, my, my, my Hispanic side, like, I learned from it, you know? And it's like, you're like, I learned so much from you Dip, like, you don't even know, you know? And it just has to do with like, like Aisha says, we have to like, do this together. America is a nation of, what did we said? It's a melting pot. Now, we're, we're never gonna unite.
But it's not, like I said, I'm always gonna, I'm still gonna believe what I believe in. Cause everybody has their right to believe what they being, but you don't, I don't want anybody to hurt anybody. And that's the main thing is hurting people, I don't want to hurt you by me being aggressive about my opinion.
Hey, that's great conversation, man.
We do, we do have our guests in the building, so probably this show can probably go for like another thirty, forty-five more minutes. Yeah, we, they, they're gonna be in here in a minute, but so since we have our guest in here, let's talk about, uh, the sponsors real quick. Before our guest comes up. W W W dot way group kid dot com, your site for all your entertainment news, sports and lifestyle trends. Wayward Kick Out Town Foundation, uh, has also the, uh, the foundation for the kids and they have the editing, uh, program classes for adults and kids. I was part of that program, so that's why I'm getting better with my editing, I better watch out, I'm playing all angles.
With your all natural smoothies, sports nutrition, supplements, fresh pressed juice, gourmet coffee and tea. Protein bars, healthy snacks and nutritional education.
And I shine, you shine, we shine, we shine, detail and make your car shine like new, they always do a great job of, um. Detailing and making your car look brand new, get out there and get your car washed.
Don't forget to go check out that promo ad we just did.
Playing. Yep, and we have butcher's wings and things, come get these wings, man. They off the hook, all flavors.
We also got the lovely novels by Z, the game isn't only for boys, experience the game told from the other side. And if you, you, you ladies are into more, um. More, um. How do I say, it's not really a physical. Like a passionate erotic. Anyways, check out novels by Z.
And you could go, where did you go to buy the book again?
Um, you go to her, her site, she's not on Amazon yet. But she will be soon.
W W W dot novels by Z, and that's novels with a Z.
Alright, go get it.
And our top donator is.
Ms. Jaya Muhammad, our top do- donator, which she will also be having a book soon, hasn't told us a name or nothing.
Yes, those definitely.
Let's not get into that.
Like our Facebook page, Daniel Tita Podcast, shout out to the YouTube channel, Daniel and Tita, listen to Daniel and Tita Podcast on Spotify and all your streaming. Wherever you catch us by, we everywhere, we everywhere.
Everywhere.
Uh, Twitch, follow us on Twitch, everywhere.
Tim C for mayor, um, the registration is over, so you don't have to worry about that anymore if you haven't. But, um, you wanna make sure that you get out and, and fill out a ballot.
Primary in November.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
But you can definitely still get out there and register before November.
Get out and vote, there's, I was talking about it earlier this week, there's a cast, a cast of black people that are going for office this year in Arizona.
Is the time is now?
And if you're not voting and making your voice heard, I don't wanna hear shit from you.
The start that we're talking about.
And I don't, I don't wanna hear the whole politic, I'm not into politics, but you know what, we need to. But I'm not into po- politics, I'm voting though.
You don't have to be into it.
No, you don't have to be into the vote. Because it's gonna make a difference.
Tim C for mayor.
Tim C for mayor, um, our guest is still on a conference call still, is there any more we can, uh? Okay, so let's, let's just talk about some other subjects and, man, matter of fact, you know what? I don't know, somebody called the podcast, this who this was real quick.
Until you bring him up, um, the Secretary of Defense issued, uh. Yeah, they issued, uh, the, the ban of the Confederate flag, so, uh, the Pentagon, and no military installations will be carrying it. So that's, that's good for us. Another thing that's kinda crazy, the CDC blocked the, the, was been, has been blocked from testifying on the trial to reopen the schools. They will not let the CDC come in and speak and say what's going on with the disease. So he's gonna pretty much try to push it through that these kids go to school, Trump.
He wants to reopen the schools, like you reopen the states, and now the cases are surging. Everywhere you going.
I don't know if this is true by seeing on, uh, some news stations. Some official news stations about Washington opening up the schools. Back, they're trying to open it back, right, Washington State. But they're going by allegedly, I'm gonna say allegedly, cause I need more information, but from, from what I'm seeing. It seems like they're going by race, and I don't know what, what that is about. I gotta do more research, but then they're letting, uh, the color, color kids in first, and not the white kids in, so. We're gonna look at more in that story. But it's looking kinda crazy. You saw that too? Yeah, so. Yeah, so it's gonna.
What's, so what's somebody who's mixed, what are you gonna do?
That's what I'm saying. It's, it's a weird, it's a weird thing to do in Washington State. I'm, uh, do more research on that story too.
I know everyone saw the video, the Mesa man who was, uh, shot with the bean bags. In front of his children. Um, the stories coming out that supposedly he was, he hit an officer in the head and he hit a woman in the head and he hit one of the kids. Um, supposedly he was running from the officer's pool full speed and punched the officer in the face, causing him to fall. And, uh, these are the things that supposedly didn't happen on the video.
Uh, should those.
The SWAT team does not wear.
Body cams?
Body cams.
They should.
They should.
Man, there's so much like questions in that.
That's right, because you don't really know what happens up to that or what.
My takeaway from that video, I watched it. But then I watched it twice and I'm like, okay, wait, 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 cause everybody was going on.
Right, everybody's going crazy about it, yeah.
So now you just proved that unarmed people don't have to die.
Right, no, 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 you right.
So unarmed people never had to die, okay, so now this is the move.
Right, but you use something that's not, you, you use something that's not lethal, you didn't use a gun or a bullet, you used. Three times.
Yeah, he did.
You know how bruised he is?
Yeah, that's gonna hurt.
We have to demand, okay, that's the move forever.
Now that's true.
Like I said, there's so many, so many things to that video, that just got too many questions.
But he's still alive, that's, he's still alive. He's still alive, that's all.
He, he's up with his family having breakfast this morning.
And that's, that's ninety percent of, uh, eighty percent of what people are saying, man, can, can people just go home after these confrontations? Go to jail, face, face the music of what they're doing. But let me go home.
I do understand the point though, like the kids was right there.
Yeah, but supposedly they saying that he hit one of the kids, so we can't know if they're saying, we trying to get him away from him because. He could have been hurt one, I don't know for sure, I wanna get more information before I start forming. It is very crazy. Definitely, and that's, that's the major point I wanna get out of it. He is alive, they didn't have to kill that man, and, um, and that's, that's a good thing. Right, right, he has a day to see, see a day in court for, if he beat his sister, his girlfriend's sister and hit the kid. If these things happen, he'll, hey, he'll face the music for that, but, um, at least he'll see that. Tamir Rice, he, he didn't even do anything and he was shot instantly, why didn't they use a bean bag and nose him? Like, it's so many situations, she's like, wow, I don't get it, man.
Definitely, that, that was crazy. Been a couple of videos going on, but they need to stick to the bean bags.
It's like, should we, should we use this as an example for everything else for the future, you know? Have vi- videos for everything?
It was bad, but it's better that he's alive, you know?
That's, that's a win though. So who called you, bro?
Somebody calling the Daniel T the podcast line. We'll see if they call back, you know, if they feel like calling back, we have OD Harris, he was in the building. OD Harris is in the building. He just taking, take care of some stuff, cause he's all about the people, you know what I'm saying? Yes, sir, yes, sir, he's in the building.
Future, future councilman, uh, Chandler. Will be running, you know what I'm saying, so you wanna get out and, uh, and vote, people in Chandler, if you, uh, you wanna make your voice heard, you know? Uh, he's be coming in soon to, to set his, uh, to, to say what he's, um, trying to do for the, for the city and, um, listen up and, and pay attention.
Definitely, yep, you got planted.
I have, um, I need to go to sleep. I've been up, I've been up like.
That's what you say.
You know what's the worst thing, I cannot nap through the day. Dude, that has been my problem since I started by working, I have not been able to come home and actually take a nap, like yesterday. For example, when I got off work. Got home and I'm laying there, I was almost dozed off asleep, here come my mama calling me. Dude, I stayed on the phone with my mama for thirty minutes. Let me tell you, Tina, my mama talked thirty minutes straight, I think I got one sentence out, the whole thirty minutes. You could ask Daniel, me and my mom could be on the phone, and I'm like, okay, mom, I'm gonna go, she's like, why, and I'm like, mom, we haven't said a word for twenty minutes. I turn, I turn over, he asleep taking a nap. I'm on the phone nodding. Wake up, you're on the phone, I'm like, she not saying nothing.
I don't know why you be talking to.
You guys don't understand though, if we hang up on our moms.
She talked to her mom twenty times a day.
Right, man.
Now they don't talk about nothing, like, nothing to talk about.
My mom, what you doing fifty times a day?
But you gotta fall back.
Unless, unless there, there's like, a cheese man like, oh, you know, you know who got married?
Unless, unless there, there's like a cheese may like, oh, you know, you know who got married or, you know what happened? I'm like, mom.
Send me, send me pictures of food.
I don't know, mom.
Send me a picture of what you eating right now. Y'all crazy, man.
Hey, this, this distancing is hurting uh, our moms a lot, okay?
Just know it's not.
What's for dinner tonight? And the ass is always chicken.
She needs to get a life, man, damn. What you eating tonight? Like who asked that? If you're not gonna eat, be at the meal, why do you even care?
Me personally, I don't talk to nobody.
You don't, you call me dog. You probably just gonna get a dial tone, so just text me. Hit me up.
Yeah, cuz you won't answer the phone for nobody unless it's one of his aunties.
I don't talk to nobody. I barely talk to you, Tina.
On the phone?
I talk to my own person, I barely talk to you.
What's going on?
Why are you calling?
So I'm like, I'm like, is that the alarm or is that somebody calling? There should be nobody calling at, at this hour. It's like, I don't know, it's like, don't call me before nine, don't call me after six.
So what, what things before uh, Mr. OD Harris comes in, what things you think uh, that will better the community?
In Arizona?
In Arizona. What kinda moves that needs to be made?
Arizona is so small, we're such a small community. Um, and um, I just, you know, I always think about the, you know me, I'm always focused on the economics of everything, so. I'm just always like, hey, more black owned businesses, more black owned, um. Retail shops, uh, whatever it is, man, let's, let's stop boxing ourself in. We could build cabinets, we could do whatever we want to, man. We could be electricians. Let's just stop boxing ourself in and let's do everything.
Where's the like, other educational programs? Like, I used to be uh.
No, you're right.
Back when I was in um.
High school?
Um, yeah, a whole lot of years ago. Um, it was a program I was in called Career Ladders. Where we were like interns at businesses.
Job Corps.
Yeah, we had, we had IVR RP, which is kinda.
No, it was career, it was called Career Ladders. It's what the school has. Um, when we, like, it would count of like sixth period or whatever. And we will lead a school, go to these different uh, businesses and be interns. So. Do they, do they have these other programs? So long, you know what I'm saying?
Schools do not anymore.
Okay, yes, so I don't know, I don't know if uh, do they have those type of things where kids can actually go into these businesses? And learn, like I was in the mailroom.
We do need more programs like that, man.
Yeah, I was in, in the mailroom department for like one of these, that runs the grocery stores, you know what I'm saying? And I thought it was crazy, you know what I'm saying, actually working, see how it goes. Oh, let me stop talking cuz we have. We'll move on to that, to a different, in a different conversation. How you doing, sir?
I'm good, how you guys doing? I'm doing great.
Wow, lots of energy, I love it.
We got some hot topics to talk about today. We got COVID nineteen, we got masks, we got kids going back to school. We got a lot of different hot topics that the community need to know about. We need to get their voice out there.
Definitely, definitely. I'm glad you're here, sir.
US Army veteran, small business owner, uh, founder of the Chandler based nonprofit, uh, and a community advocate. Are you from Phoenix?
I'm not from Phoenix, I'm from the Midwest. Where my Chi-town people at?
Did you know Tim C?
You know what, I met Tim C's in the community, he was doing a back to school drive. Uh, I went there cuz I love giving back to the community. I dropped off like three hundred supplies to his back.
I love how y'all working together, thank you, thank you. Thank you for that. I love y'all working together like that, that's great.
Yeah, and then um, he turned around, he uh, I gave it to him and then we've been in contact ever since then. And then the brother turned around. Years later, when I started running for council, he gave me a thousand dollars on my campaign and the first brother step up and make it happen for me. He got that Barry White voice.
Smooth, smooth jazz. It's the request hour. So what was the decision?
The midnight storm.
I might, I might have to borrow your voice for later, you know?
He got that Barry White voice. I love the ladies.
I guess this is like the two hour special right here.
Overtime.
Long as people get aware, long as people get aware.
I'm Jordan in the clutch.
Exactly, we winning, we winning. What was the decision uh, that, that you, that made you want to uh, go for the city council?
Man, you know what? The run has been real. I mean, if you look at Chandler, we have two hundred sixty-eight thousand people there. A lot of the community there are black and brown, they're underrepresented, their voice have been voiceless. I'm here to put the voice back in the uh, voiceless peoples. And you know what? It's been a great success. I've been dealing with a lot of crazy stuff down there, but you know what? It's a part of the campaign. It's a part of what we need to do. We got homeless issues down there in Chandler. We got our kids going back to school and we need, they need our support. I mean, there's many different things that we need to talk about. Don't know how much time we're gonna have it, but you know what? I'm the people's candidate, you know, and I feel like I'm the people's choice at this point.
You, you talk about whatever you wanna talk about right now. You wanna bring out right now, it's up to you.
Yeah, you know what? I had a meeting with Dr. Castillo, she is a superintendent for the CUSD Chandler Unified School District. I had a meeting with her, she said over eight thousand black and brown kids will be left behind if we don't act now. And also, this is, come on, what you saying now? That's a real thing that's happening right now in our community. And people look at Chandler like, man, Chandler is thriving, they got money, they got wealth. But what happens when the money is disproportionate and when it does not come to our community? Our voice will not be heard. We need to make sure that that voice is heard. We need everyone that's listening to this show, they gotta donate. Give to our black and brown candidates that are responsive to our issues, you know? Don't just vote because they're black, vote because they responsive to our issues, they're addressing our issues. Oh my god, and then also, I'm just gonna say this point, cuz the west and north Chandler aspect, they have abandoned cars, they have hazardous materials. They have toilet bowls where our black and brown people live in their back alleyways and the city expect them to clean it up. And I think that it's the city responsibility to take some of that money and clean it up for the people, do it for the people. And that's what ends up happening, we end up having this redlining, they can't go get loans. We got squatters living in the north part of our Chandler in their houses, they're not doing anything about it. There is a lot of issues, but you know what? If we don't talk about these issues, they won't be brought up. That's why I'm here today to talk about it.
Mr. OD Harris is coming in, the ring, and swinging everywhere, man.
You know, but I think, I think the most important thing is that people see a candidate that they can relate to. I'm that person that I wanna relate to, I wanna talk to you. You know what? We gonna always agree, but we can talk about the issues and we can put the issues before the people. At the end of the day, our people need us to be there for us and I, and they need an agenda. So I got a black and brown agenda, so we making it happen around here.
Do you, do you worry about the, the numbers of Chandler that's, since you're such a, we are such a small percentage of the city?
You know what? I do worry about the numbers, that's why my message has been for all the people, you know, I have. Right now, I feel like, right now, I should be talking to my black and brown people because I feel like this is the audience I'm talking to. I understand that I gotta represent all people and I will represent all people, but it's just like Black Lives Matter, right? If the houses are burning up, we need to put the fire out of the house that's burning, right? That's, if right now we're talking about our black and brown agenda, then we need to be responsive to that black and brown agenda and that's what I'm bringing to the forefront.
Everything better, spreading out, yep.
Right, well, I mean, you have to look at what platform we're on. We have to talk to everyone's issue. Yes, I have to represent everyone. Yes, I, I do understand the fact that there is a lot of people that um, that I'm gonna be speaking to. And I feel like, you know, right now, the people who's supporting my campaign the most outside of black and brown is middle aged white women. Yep, it's a huge portion of middle aged white women that really supports my uh, my campaign and I'm doing well in Chandler. I mean, you guys may have heard about um, some of my signs going down.
Mentioned that, I heard about that.
It's been, uh, it, man, it's been crazy and over fifty, I think we're into sixty, sixty, seventy in a range area currently right now. Uh, people continue to take my signs, slash them, cut them in half and it, it is, and they throw them across the field and. You know, I gotta stay positive. I'm a candidate, I gotta stay positive. They scared, that's what it is. Well, you know what? When people start speaking up for people, then that's when you get the crazy ones that try to divide the line. At the end of the day, Chandler has continued to respond, they're ready for change, they're ready for someone to re- represent them, not just because I'm black. I just happen to be black, who happened to have a master's degree in accounting, who happened to have a bachelor's degree. Who happened to sit on multiple boards that gives out money, who happened to have started thirty-five locations in seven different states and accounting and successfully to sell their business. So I happen to be that dude, I happen to be that guy. Y'all go ahead, ask the question.
I was just seeing um, some of the economic development that you had, uh, that you were going to advocate for. Uh, workforce training and pipelines through public, um, building public, uh, private partnerships and cover recovery. I think that is very important and I, and I definitely uh, think that should be on the forefront and I definitely agree with you. What uh, ways can we get workforce training worked into the, the schools and the community? Um, that, what ideas do you have to try to get that worked into the communities or the, the high schools?
Well, you know what? That is a great question, I'm glad that you asked that, uh, because I do care about our workforce development. And what I feel at this point, we have the Chandler Gilbert um, College and that is a partnership between Gilbert, the city of Gilbert and the city of Chandler. Those are um, junior, those are, that's a community college that where our students can go to and get those development of skills. So making sure that they have the resources, making sure that they have the money, so that way they can provide those services to our students and those skill sets, then they can um, be developed. One of the things that I, I wanna try to go back and grab is the fact that um, uh, Chandler is a technology hub. We have Intel, we have NXP, we have PayPal, we have a lot of different um, technology company. What I would like to do is create an initiative that they've already kinda created at Bashes High School where we can take our young people and introduce them to technology early age, but I wanna allow that certificate program to also funnel through to our north and west part of Chandler where our vulnerable community lives. And the reason why I keep saying that is because although we may have the resource, it's access. It's the affordability aspect of us being able to get there. So a lot of parents may not be able to take their kids from South Chandler to North Chandler, North Chandler, vice versa. So what we need to do is make sure that that program is set up there. That's why we have Boys and Girls Clubs in um, marginalized communities, right? Because we need to make sure that the access is there. And so I think that's kinda what I'm going to do as a candidate. Is to look at that and say, how do we bring it over here? How do we make sure that the resource that's happening in South Chandler? And is making sure that it gets provided over in North Chandler.
I like, I, I like you, Mr. OD Harris. Maybe one day we can get you and Tim C in the, in the same time.
I would love to have Tim there because.
That would be a good one.
We'll, we'll talk later about that, we'll see if we can get that going, that's great.
I mean, you know what the thing is, is that I'm passionate and I think that the voters need to have someone represented that are passionate, that is responsive. Yeah, I'm not getting paid, I'm getting paid thirty thousand dollars a year, so I will need to have another job. I need a job, man. And you know, a- after taxes, you're talking about fifteen thousand dollars to live off of. So not only am I gonna serve two hundred sixty-eight thousand people, I have to serve them on a thirty thousand dollar a year budget, but you know what?
That shows how much you care.
Oh man, beyond the money, you have to care and it's gonna cost more money to win an election than it does. Then I'm gonna make, ain't that crazy?
I know you have the, the Ready Set Go Foundation or?
I have the Ready Set Go Foundation that has helped start over eighteen hundred jobs. Give me that, yes. Round and round we go. But you know, I, I created that program to help people start their own business, you know? And so many black and brown have taken advantage of that. I do believe in what Oprah said, hey, we have to give our people um, handups, not handouts. And I think that black and browns, I'm so tired of us, I'm so tired of people sharing the narrative that black and browns ne- uh, is always looking for a handout on it. We don't care about that, we only want the same plane, we wanna be on the same level playing field. We want the same equalities that everyone else have. We will work hard, we will make the money, we will do what we gotta do, but we just wanna have access.
He is, he got that voice, for real.
They gonna be like, wait minute, we understand OD is here, but who's that brother with that face? Who's that guy with the voice? But I will say this though, one of the proudest moments that my foundation is, has been pre- presidentially awarded. Um, and then also, uh, also I actually uh, have expanded into five different states. But I wanna talk about one particular city that everybody should know and this is probably one of a big accomplishment in terms of moving it outside of the Chandler um, boundaries outside of state Arizona, but being able to cross into other state lines, is that I have the only business oriented foundation in Tulsa, Oklahoma. Where our people was burned, killed, slaughtered and destroyed and the only real black Wall Street movement that really happened. One of the real black Wall Street movements that happened right there and I actually have a foundation where I've spent thousands of my own dollars making sure that that program goes and I continue to put money into that particular area, into that particular city where our people are still being oppressed to this day.
Quick question on that though, are they s- starting to rebuild a black Wall Street in Tulsa? Or they, or is the program to get it in other areas or what is the, the real?
Well, you know, when they actually burnt our city and bombed our city with the government, you know, you talking about two hundred and forty thousand acres of our land. Okay, and so when you go to Tulsa right now, it's just one little mere strip of, of plaques of those businesses that was there. The thing that people need to understand is that our people was pulled out of the homes, pulled by their hair. Our women was raped, they was put into the church, they was locked, the church was locked up and it burned, okay? And then the National Guard came in and dropped bombs on our people, utterly destroying all those hundreds of thousands of acres of land. That was a direct attack. We still have not got an apology from the government from this happening. And we need to make sure that we keep our eyes on the prize and making sure that people know that that did happen. In Tulsa and Oklahoma needs to come through and apologize to our people. And so that's important, so people need to understand that the work that we're doing there is very critical and is very important.
That's, that's true. That's true. They have not really actually apologized for that.
Have they actually apologized for anything?
Slavery, anything, no, they haven't.
No, they have not.
I mean, come on, let's be real, we, we have to, see the thing is, is that we have to be comfortable talking about these issues. I know people wanna back away from these controversial topics, but they need to be reminded, this is history. And we're gonna make sure that we remind people so it doesn't uh, repeat itself.
That's right.
I'm gonna give you an example in Chandler that needs to be reminded. Uh, our brown people in Chandler was being pulled out of their homes and being deported back to Mexico. It was called the roundup, it happened in nineteen ninety-seven where they literally, the cops was going, rounding up our neighborhood. Busting down our brown people's doors, pulling them out, including Americans that actually was actually there. Born citizens, exactly. And you're talking about nineteen ninety-seven? This was not long ago, this is you and I, you know, age group, right? So that's what happened in, in Chandler. We cannot let them forget our black and brown people. And what I wanna do is create an, an initiative that reminds the people of what happened in Chandler, that we don't forget. And we need to make sure we don't forget. And how do we make sure that that happens? Is by making sure that we have, making sure the city government provide funding so that where we can march, we can talk about, we can have programs, we can talk about. And not just multicultural, let's talk about brown issues, let's talk about black issues, let's talk about Asian issues. And not just stop, stop putting everything together and say, oh, this is the multicultural, no, because black issues are different from brown issues. Brown issues are different from Asian issues and all that, so we all different. So let's be real, let's give people the opportunity to represent their culture. I mean, I like to, you know, I like Cinco de Mayo. We want Cinco de Mayo, we want that, but we wanna be a part of that culture. You know, you know, we are trendsetters, you know what I'm saying? People follow what we do, we set the trend, they follow it, you know, and that's, that's, you should be proud about that. We should be proud about our culture, we should be proud about our kings and we should be proud, proud about our queens and let, don't let nobody ever tell you otherwise. Don't let nobody. Don't let nobody have, have you holding your head down about your culture. This is where, this is who you are. No matter how much you want to be somewhere else, no matter what community you've been leading, if you're black, you're black. It don't matter if you're black in a white neighborhood. It doesn't matter if you're white in a, in a, in a brown neighborhood. You are who you are. God made you and you're important. You're important. I just need you to vote. I need everyone to get the word out. Go to ODHarris.com. If this message is resonating to you, go to ODHarris.com, ODHarrisForAZ.com. But it's time for us to really start having real conversations. It's time for us to get out there and vote. If you haven't already, you need to make sure that that's a part of your plan. August the fourth, the general election for, um, for Chandler is happening. I need everybody to get on their social media underneath the sound of my voice. I need you to go out there and tweet about it, talk about it. Tweet about it. Tell somebody.
Share, 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 share.
Exactly. The black Twitter. We got black Twitter. Do we got black Facebook yet? Is that happening?
I don't know about black Facebook yet. We got, we got, we got too, too much arguing going on.
No, but you know, we have real issues that's going on in our country, you know? I mean, you're talking about the kids, you're talking about the face mask, the mandate for face masks. A lot of people have, have changed the conversation. We really need to look at the, the, uh, COVID virus and we need to say, this is a real issue. This is a real crisis that we're going through in our country. And the best thing to protect us is to make sure that we put a mask on so that where we can be a, uh, so we can safely protect other people that is a part of this, um, uh, our society.
So the masks we got, Tita. We got them masks.
We got the small mask. We got the medium sized mask. We got black mask, white mask. And we got them blue masks. You know what I'm saying? Cause they all matter. Everybody matters today. Everybody matters. Let your neighbor know. Say, everybody matters today.
So August fourth?
August fourth, make your vote count. I think it's, you know, and then also we're, um, you know, one of the things that I just want to bring up real quick is that, um, I want to just make sure that everyone knows that our police and our, uh, our police have been doing a good job in Chandler. Every, every issue that has, um, come up in front and in terms of what things they should do to make sure policing is better in Chandler. Our police chief Sean Duggan has made sure he has initiated that, every single one.
So how, so how, how do they communicate that with Phoenix and Mason?
Well, 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 you know. Well, I, right. One city at a time. You're going way too far, okay? We just solved the problems for Chandler. We still got some black and brown issues. But I will say that I'm so proud of, um, um, Sean and the work that he's doing. He continues to implement this. Our issues are uniquely different, but I can say that we need to reward and we need to make sure that we let people know when our police is doing well, let's reinforce that good behavior. But if you're gonna do a bad job, we're gonna slap that hand. You know what I'm saying? And so I think right now what's going on in Phoenix is that they slapping that hand. You know what I'm saying? You haven't been doing enough good work for the people. So in Chandler, uniquely Sean Duggan has implemented all the things that the police, um, policing in America that Obama put out. Police Chief Sean Duggan has implemented every single thing. And you can go on our website to learn about any incident. So they even have it to a science to the point where if they actually unbuckle their, uh, unbuckle their weapon, then it's a report automatically done. And so it's already.
They need to speak with Jerry Williams.
Cause there's a lot of that. And you gotta think too, there is some deep seated, um, systemic racism issues that's in the police department. It doesn't change because we have a black police chief. You still got to change the core of the system. That's why it moves, that's why we talk about, um, system. It starts with individualized, right? Individualized racism, then we go to group racism, then we go to systemic racism, then we go to institutionalized racism. And what she's dealing with is institutionalized racism, which is a totally different level. That is the highest level of racism. So it, just because we had a black president, it did not change the institution.
People don't understand that.
They don't.
No, they look at the president. We took a step back because of it, because of him. You know, it's, it's, it's.
They don't understand the process, how things work, so.
Well, they have to, we have to elect these people and that's why I said that in Chandler, what we have done is we have continued through Sean Duggan and through our, uh, through our fire chief Duggan, um, Tom, who has done a good job in saying, hey, we're gonna make sure that we address the black issues. Actually, uh, our police chief was the first one to march with the Black Lives Matter marchers. He was the first one to do that. Give it to them, you know, and thus, and that's why I, I am positive. I'm hopeful about our relations with our black and brown people. Yeah, do we got issues? Absolutely. We need to make sure that the, we can do better, okay? We can make sure that our black and brown children are not being pulled to the side by our safety officers that's in our school and being questioned without their parents. We can make sure that, uh, our police officers are not profiling and not mean mugging our citizens as they drive through our black and brown communities. We can also make sure that, um, our, our children are being, um, put first and we're making sure that they're not being done, they're not being isolated from all the other kids and being profiled as they have done. And we need to make sure them body cams is working all the time. Unless you want a break, unless you want a lunch break, a bathroom break, that camera needs to be on.
I can't even ask you a question because you, you, you're saying everything.
He asked the question, he asked the question all at once.
I want to say though that, um.
I want to say this right quick. I'm gonna say this right quick. Let me just say this. I'm getting married on Monday.
Congratulations. How did you have time for all this?
I'm getting married on Monday to the love of my life, Miss Elizabeth. Uh, she is the love of my life and I'm, I'm happy about that. And it's good to have a queen next to my side, you know? Every queen needs a king and every king needs a queen. And if you don't have a queen and you're a king, then you need to make her a queen and stop mistreating her so she can be there, you know what I'm saying? So am I talking language to somebody? Look at love connection. This the love show. I will say though, I got, uh, I am gonna be inheriting two bonus children. And I have two children before I was, um, before I made this next step, I was a single father for many years. Raising my children and I have full custody of them. So I'm making sure that my kids go through the full process. I love my children. Um, I think one thing when my ex and I, we, um, went our separate ways many, many years ago. Uh, one thing that I prayed and I asked God for was to teach me how to be a compassionate man. Teach me how to be loving because I need to learn how to love my daughter. Because I was used to her mother loving her the way she needed to be loved, but I needed to step in and say, daddy, how do I love? So some of the things I would do, you know, I would lay with my daughter. I would, you know, hey, let me do your hair. Let's go out and have some ice cream together. That taught me how to be a real man. Loving fathers, loving their daughters would teach you how to be a real man and teach you how to be a queen. You know, teaches you how to have a good queen on your side and treat her right.
That's truth right there.
Yeah, so.
The importance of being in your kid's life, man.
Man, and I think we have so many different images of our fathers being in jail. We got so many different images of our fathers being arrested. But did you know that there, there is a lot of black educated men out there that have bachelor's degrees? There's more educated men out there than they are in the prison system.
Yeah, but people don't talk, we don't, they don't talk about that type of stuff.
That's why.
Education for black men is such a taboo.
It is.
It really is.
Well, that's what people think, but more people are educated than they think. You know what I mean? That's what, that's what we getting to.
Yeah, and I think that at the end of the day, um, this is why somebody asked me and it's like, well, OD, you know, how would you feel? This may be controversial, but I'm gonna say it anyways. How would you feel if someone put, you know, like I put a thing out there and I said, for me and my boo, I made a video of us and I said, black love, and it got thousands and thousands, it went almost viral. I think we had like ten or fifteen thousand views. And then they said, well, how would you feel if someone put out white love? I said, well, if that's what you want to put out there, we will see how the responses are. I said, but the thing that we have, the reason why we have to do this, because remember, we're just now getting past segregation. We don't think that they're, you know, they separated our families. They tore our fathers, they put our fathers in jail and they, they broke up our homes. And so people need to see that, that we're are, that we are coming back together and that we're stronger than where we was before. And so they need to see these positive reinforcements of black love. Because then that may help a black man or a black woman say, you know what? I can do better for my children.
Yeah, I like to, I like the togetherness, you know, me and my, my, my wife, we put black and brown love. Just to show that togetherness, unitiness and everything. So it, it does. It's just, it's a positive message.
Yeah, absolutely. And every day we're sending messages, like right now we're podcasting, we're talking live and, and we're sending powerful, powerful messages out there to the world, like, hey, there's a black candidate running. There's only fifteen black candidates running in the state of Arizona. Come on, that's change. That's more than what we had last time. We need more African Americans to step up and run for office.
Yeah, we do. It will, it will change things.
Absolutely. But remember what I told you, the levels of racism that we deal with, right? Individualized groups, system, institution. And that's what we're dealing with and that's why people don't want to buck against the system. But in order for our voice to be heard, in order for us to have a seat at the table, you need to make sure that you run, you need to be, uh, civically engaged. That needs to be happening. And that's why when I win my election, and I will win my election. When I win that thing, I'm actually gonna be, I'm actually gonna be looking for thirty-five different individuals to sit on my commission so that way we can address these issues, address our issues of.
I'd like to say something. One, two, three.
Hey, where my Warren G at?
I'm trying to figure out a question to ask, cause Mr. Harris did everything. We can talk about your book too.
I need some promotion for some money, okay? Yeah, the quantum leap theory of leadership that is out, uh, in the stores right now is Amazon bestseller then the pandemic hit, okay? But I sold thousands of units of copies of that. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Uh, and so I was happy about that. And now, now I'm actually out there, um, now I need to get on tour, okay? I need to come back on this show and, uh, bring my book, but we sold thousands of units and many people were impressed, uh, the book. We talk about Oprah, we talk about Elon Musk, we talk about many of the people, the influencers of business and how they was able to make that quantum leap. A lot of times people are trying to figure out, how do I jumpstart my business? How do I change where I'm going? How do I change the dynamics? Who do I need to be around? And some of the things I talk about in that book is changing your circle. And being able to understand where you are and where you want to go. And a lot of people out here in this world, they in the wrong circle and they figuring out like, man, I am going nowhere. Why am I not going anywhere? The reason why you're not going anywhere, cause you're around the wrong circle. You need to change that. You need to change that, um, circle, you know what I'm saying? So I think that's so important that we, um, that we do that and we understand that, you know? So that book is out. Go to Amazon, Quantum Leap Theory of Leadership. It's one of the baddest books in the land.
We gonna pick it up.
You a quantum leap fan?
Oh, I'm a quantum leap fan.
That was a good show, man.
I know, I know you're a busy man.
Yes, sir.
Running out of limited time too. Um, tell, tell the people how they win the vote, how to vote, how to connect with you.
All right, y'all want me to tell you your social security number too?
To the wedding?
I know, right, man. Jeez. Yeah, we are getting married.
There's gonna be a lot of questions.
It is gonna be a lot of questions. So the number one thing, go to ODHarrisForAZ.com. You make sure you follow me on social media, ODHarrisAZ on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. I am the people's choice candidate. I'm holding people accountable. I'm making sure it's a transparent government out there. And I'm bringing hope back to the people because so many people are in need of hope. And I hope that I am talking to the right audience that understands the power of the message that we're trying to say. I wish I had a witness today. Where all my church people at? Where all my riders at?
Before we, before we go in the zone and everything, we have a game for you.
Okay.
Are you ready?
I'm ready for the game.
You sure?
Yes. I'm open as a buck. He did. Oh, God. I gotta compete against Tim? Oh, man, you know, he the man of the hour.
Five for five.
Okay, oh, well, this is some tough competition.
All right. All right, so it's a trivia game.
Okay.
I've got five questions.
Okay.
You get three out of five correct and we'll donate fifty dollars to your charity of choice.
Okay.
Also, you have three lifelines.
Okay.
You can call someone, you can Google the answer, in which case we'll give you forty-five seconds to answer. Or you can skip a question.
Oh, my goodness. Brian, you better be in here. What my campaign manager, get in here right now, Brian. I want to give shouts out to my campaign manager, Brian Foxy, making it happen around here. With nothing but love, nothing but love. Okay, go ahead.
You ready?
Yeah, I'm ready for this.
Question one.
Yes.
Which Elton John song did President Donald Trump use to nickname North Korean leader Kim Jong-un?
Oh, my goodness.
You can get, you got help. You get some help too.
All right, I need a lifeline.
Which lifeline we using? Calling?
I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna pull from, somebody from the audience.
We gonna pull from the audience. Rocket Man.
Rocket Man, yeah. I knew he would knew. Don't judge my campaign manager. I knew he would knew that.
Campaign manager saved the day.
Question two. Who became both a vice president and president of the United States without ever being elected to either office?
I know it had to be in Nixon's era.
That's what I thought too.
That's what you thought?
That's what I thought.
Oh, my goodness.
They don't know the answers or the.
Man, y'all wrong, man.
I think I, I think I know, but maybe I'm wrong.
Oh, my, I'm gonna go ahead.
How much time we got left, Tita?
Oh, my goodness. Come on. Come on, Jesus. Come on through like a mighty rushing wind. Holy Spirit. Skip the answer.
Can we get, can we get the answer?
Gerald Ford.
I thought it was Lyndon Johnson. My, my answer was Lyndon B. Johnson is what I thought it was.
I was thinking that error, you know? I knew Tim was gonna know. He know the whole history of the, of everything.
You one for two, one for two. You didn't beat Tim C, but it's okay.
Wait a minute, I'm two for two. Didn't I get a lifeline?
That was on question one. Question two.
Okay, and then I got the.
Here's question three.
I, I like her facial expression. Bro, you going down real fast. I hope your campaign.
Commercial. Who was vice president of the United States when Lincoln was assassinated?
Oh, my God. My goodness.
I told you it was hard, man. I'm like, babe, that's hard. She's like, no, it's not. All right, babe. Do your thing.
Can I take forty-five seconds to Google right quick?
When you see the answer, you're gonna be really surprised.
I think I know the answer.
Start with A? Oh, I know it. I know it. I know it. Wow.
Andrew Johnson.
I'm dope.
Andrew Johnson?
I feel smart a little bit because I knew that answer. You got that one.
Question four. This was gonna be so easy. You gonna be mad if you don't know it.
Okay.
The United Kingdom's withdrawal from the European Union is commonly known as what?
You know this.
Wait a minute, say the question again.
The United Kingdom's withdrawal from the European Union is commonly known as what?
They just, it just happened a few years ago, uh, when Trump was elected.
Everybody's face is like, ah, they gonna sit on edge right now. Everybody's face is like, ah, they gonna sit on edge right now.
Uh, my God.
Repeat the question one more time?
The United Kingdom's withdrawal from the European Union is commonly known as?
Ex.
It's on the tip of your tongue.
Ex, uh, uh, ex-union? Is ex?
It's Brexit.
Brexit, I was trying to, I, I, I was, it was on the tip of my tongue, I just think that I need to redo this again. I couldn't remember the rest of it, I couldn't remember the rest of it.
Just have a chance, right?
Okay, give me one more chance, give me. Big, give me one more chance. Alright.
Who assassinated President Abraham Lincoln?
Oh, you switched.
Oh, okay, I know, uh, oh my goodness, I know who he is, it was a white guy that did that. Uh, uh, Harvey Lee, uh, no, um.
That's the other one.
Yeah, 15 seconds.
They all got triple names, so.
Uh, 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 Boone, uh, 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 uh. Mr. Boone, I don't know.
John Wilkes Booth.
Boone, yeah, Boone, yeah, dog, yeah.
He said Boone though, so.
Aw, man, I knew it, I knew it was that. He said, aw, man, you know.
Nah, I, I thank you for coming.
Who's right there?
David Killen, there you go.
David Killen, he got out most of the answers.
They didn't know that the cheat sheet was right here, y'all, this ain't even right, man. Hey, this shouldn't discourage your vote, okay? I, I need y'all to understand, forget this man, okay? Forget this man, I'm all out of black history moments, this is a black history moment, okay? Oh my goodness.
All on it.
They get it, they, they be getting it.
We need Harriet Tubman on the $20 bill, okay?
Man.
Jeez.
I really appreciate you coming, taking the time out to come to the show.
Definitely.
Good to meet you, bro.
Whatever we can do to help you with your campaign, to make sure people voting, let us know, we'll put you, put you up here.
Give us a poster.
Yes, put that up there.
We definitely will.
Alright, I got a, I got a yard sign that I gotta, I'm gonna bring in here. Just, just put it right next to my man Tim C, who's making it happen, okay? The time is now, but I, I wanted to say this to the people before I get off this live. I just want to let everyone know that I appreciate your time, all the different support. Uh, I have been supported by, uh, our first black mayor, Cory, um, uh, Cory Woods.
Okay, definitely, definitely.
And, uh, many of our black candidates have came out and just endorsed my campaign. I want to thank many of the people, my campaign manager who's doing a phenomenal job, um, Brian Foxy continuing to open up ways. You know, he's traveled all around the world and, uh, believe it or not, it's funny because I'm in Chandler representing people that may not look like me, but he lived and he was raised around people that looked just like me every single day.
Right.
So the diversity of culture, of ideals and people, uh, is, is just there. And I think people all around America is, is on a movement to make change, really do happen. People do want to be heard, people's voices are being heard right now, I, I am the people's choice. I'm asking for everyone to vote August the 4th, make that happen, make your voice happen.[1738.08]